Call this meeting to order if you please stand, we can salute our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
In attendance this evening are supervisors Fisher, Agizio, Cassiola, Savavik, and Fleer. In addition, Township Manager Don Genuzzo, Jack King, Director of Planning and Assistant Township Manager, Sean Bukowinski, Chief of Police, Engineer Dan Dizeroth of Gateway Engineers and Township Solicitor Gretchen Moore. Comments will be taken at this time for any item to be voted on by the board that appears on the agenda. General Township comments or questions will be addressed after the Board of Supervisors' discussion of old business. Please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. You can't hear her. She can't. Can you hold? Is there, is there a microphone thing you're trying to? Dan, do you see if there's one where you can hold?
I can't reach.
There you go.
Oh, was it on? Okay.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay, I'm Linda Cronin, 117 Consilla Drive in the Rosewood Park Plan. I'm directing my comments about Resolution 622021 about the gate at Rose Avenue. Because of the COVID restrictions and limited capacity, I circulated a petition of which 23 houses, with all residents residing in those homes, signed and some residents have also sent emails in lieu of their physical presence. In December, a resident of Rose Avenue called the Township Manager and advised the gate was open at Rosewood Park Gate, Rosewood Avenue. She was advised that there was nothing that could be done as it was the property of the homeowner of 122 Rose Avenue. A follow-up call was made and received the same response. Another resident of Rose Avenue was also advised could not close gate. I also called in February and was advised at that time that matter was referred to the solicitor. Cecil Township homeowners at 122 Rose Avenue have an adjoining lot for whom address is in Canonsburg Borough. To access that driveway, they have to go to the side that Cecil Township has barred access from Canonsburg. Unfortunately, that prevented the homeowner from putting, getting access to her driveway. So when Cecil constructed a gate, they gave the key to them so they could get access to their driveway. The residents of Rosewood Park understand the inconvenience of having to open the gate, but they also have an option to construct access to the driveway from the Cecil Township side. A letter was sent to Canonsburg Borough by our solicitor, and I quote, "In response to Cecil Township's concern, the Cecil Township Board of Supervisors unanimously voted in the September 3, 2013 meeting to permanently close Rose Avenue at its connection point to Lucia Drive in Canonsburg Borough." After that letter, the developer changed the name from Lucia to Rose at that connection point. By having the gate open for the last three months, that has violated our own resolution. If we could not close gate, it was an obligation to use other means to prevent access. Also, if any changes requested, like a request to remove the gate, we should be notified as it impacts the whole plan since we are listed as a no-outlet plan. It can't be up to us to monitor the agenda in such a serious manner. Many of the residents I spoke to, including me, do not understand why access was permitted and nothing done when claims were called into the township that a violation occurred. Speeding cars near misses and inadequate traffic controls are some concerns that were addressed to the result was the denial of the throughway years ago. And I was just wondering if there was any communication in Canonsburg recently.
So there hasn't been, so there hasn't been any communication with Canonsburg. We are going to, we had conversations with Gretchen and Dan. Dan is going to reach out to the homeowner and try to come up with a solution. Unfortunately, they do have a key to access the gate. So it's not realistic for us to be able to constantly check that gate and make sure that it's closed. But we are, we're going to actually table the agenda item that's there tonight and give Gretchen and Dan authorization to go to that homeowner and try to work out an agreement to keep that road closed.
Does she own the gate?
She doesn't, I don't, she doesn't own the gate. It's on a public street. It's our gate, but, but they have a key to it. So even if we would send a police there and give them the right to close and lock it, they could walk right out their front door and open it back up again.
Okay.
So that's the point. So we're, we, we are aware of it. We are still on the page of wanting to keep that road closed, that access road closed. We just need to give Gretchen and Dan some time to come up with a solution.
So I guess one of the things that we, we were actually questioning that at that point when you're deciding that, if the, if you, if the homeowners open the gate and do not shut the gate, what should happen? Can the gate be reclosed by Cecil Township? And should a letter be sent to the homeowner outlining the conditions and restrictions about opening the gate?
That's the.
So in essence, if they're violating our ordinance, they should, you should change the locks on the gate and she should not have, you know, be able to use the gate at her request. And so it's been open for three months.
Well, the issue.
Are you going to close the gate right now?
The issue is that we can't, we gave her a key. That is access to her driveway. Just give us, we, we are on the same page. We want to keep that road closed. Give us the opportunity to try to talk to the homeowner and come to some sort of agreement.
Okay, well, we, we all appreciate that.
Yeah, that's all we're asking.
You know, to see that we can get this gate closed because I was out for 15 minutes and seven cars passed by.
Right.
And they're speeding. And there's kids going down the street.
Right.
Well, I don't know if they're going down the street now for the school bus, but you know.
Right.
So, but I would appreciate, you know, if you would just, you know, Dawn has my email. If you could just give me a little heads up so that when the other residents call and ask me what's going on, I can at least give them some information.
We'll do. Yeah, we'll do. We're trying to work this out.
Well, that's great. And I, I just couldn't understand why, nothing was done for three months.
Let's just not, yeah. Well, give us the opportunity to try to work this out and we will be in touch with you once, once we come to a resolution.
Once the petition.
I think, I'm good. Thank you.
Well, with this, with this COVID, we had a good decision.
It's fine. You can give it to Dawn if he wants to keep it for the record, but I don't, we don't need it at this point. Do you have an item, something that's on the?
I'm Linda's husband in the gate again. I got a couple prospective solutions. And this is, this is off the Washington County website. This is the property right here on Rose, this is Rose Avenue. This is Consilla Drive here. With my finger over that, that's the profile of their driveway. I'm proposing, I'm proposing that we add, we remove the gate and put it on this side. Now, this side would be gated. This side would be through to that Y. So now these people have an option of coming up and going into Canonsburg or coming up and going into Cecil. This is a series of posts, maybe five, maybe eight feet apart, too far for a car to maneuver. And that, but open for, for traffic. And these gates would proceed to that point in the Y.
Right.
So now, this gate is open for emergency access, but it's not open for a car to, they would have to go down their driveway, turn around and come back on here to access.
It's interesting. Dan, Dan, you want to take a look at this?
Yeah.
That's okay. He can actually keep it since he's, he can actually hang on to that since he's the one that's going to.
Yeah, so you see what I'm doing here? Cecil Township right there is Canonsburg. You know, that's the profile of their driveway right now. They got to turn away. So if, if there, I was hoping they were going to be here. So you just put a series of posts along here and then maybe three posts to that, to the Y point. And no one can, can enter through there. Snowplows can come all the way down here and just push that post. The Can, our Canonsburg can push that right up through there, just past this driveway. That's all they need to do.
Okay.
So there, there is, there is.
Dan, you can, Dan, you can keep that.
That's kind of what we're talking about.
Yeah, we had, we had talked about approaching them.
An alternate solution for your driveway.
Yeah. It's going to cost money, but you know.
Yeah.
We can't, we can't keep one open, closing it up.
Right.
And unfortunately, the way it is now, boy, those people, their property values got to be.
Right, which is.
I empathize with it.
Yeah, same.
It's, as a matter of fact, in, what is in '05, this board, the population of the board at that time, passed that, you know, let, let Canonsburg.
Make that connection.
As their phase four to enter right there.
Right.
And so.
No, absolutely not.
It was.
It all came from Canonsburg. We tried to stop the road up the back. We started barricades up. That showed that we couldn't, we couldn't not stop them from showing their plan with their developer.
Yeah.
We told them, don't, don't approve that because we're not going to let you have a through road.
Is that, is that true?
Canonsburg.
I heard it the other way.
Yeah, well, this is the way.
And I, and I can't, I can't access any minutes back then, unfortunately.
All right, thank you.
One other permanent solutions, if that doesn't work, is just buy the house, knock it down, and then put a big rock right in the middle of the road so you cannot pass either way. And sell the right-of-way or give it to Canonsburg. And then to recoup some money, sell those two lots to anybody who wants to buy it, you know. But you might get 50, 60,000. You might pay 150 for the, for the lots and house. That's a couple of solutions. So that's my two solutions on, on that. And just a. Couple more images, just of what it was and what it is now. This is a historic picture of what it was. And, and this is today. You know, with, you know, it's, it's, they had a real nice place over there, isolated, but now it's, it's, it's a mess over there.
Yep, thank you. Thank you. Any other comments on agenda items? Okay. Pavilion rentals for Cecil Township residents only will be this Friday, March 5, 2021, beginning at 6:00 a.m. Rental for non-residents is the second Friday in March, March 12, 2021, beginning at 8:00 a.m. Pavilion rental is on a first-come, first-served basis. Jordan Tax Service, I'm sorry. Due to COVID-19 restrictions, please see the pink signs with new procedures for pavilion rentals posted at the front door of the municipal building and on our website. Jordan Tax Service will be at the Township Building to collect property taxes on March 4th from 9:00 to noon, March 5th from 1:00 to 4:00, March, May 19th from 9:00 to noon, May 24th from 1:00 to 4:00, and May 28th from 9:00 to noon. Parks and Recreation will sponsor the annual Easter egg hunt on Saturday, March 27, 2021, at 10:00 a.m. Registration information will be posted to our website and the Parks and Recreation Facebook page. We did have an executive session this evening at 6:30 before the meeting. We discussed pending litigation and attorney-client privileged information. Moving on to resolutions. 512021. Consider authorizing the extension clause for the Traditions of America Phase III subdivision plan, allowing for the plan to be recorded after the 90-day period has lapsed. This plan received Board of Supervisors' approval on September 8, 2020.
This is one of Liz's agenda items, and I can speak to it. But again, as it, as it says, they've ran past the recording time for whatever reason to get signatures on the plan. And this is just a reapproval of the Phase III plan that was approved by the board, so it can be recorded.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a sec? Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. 522021. Consider the Cecil Township Planning and Zoning 2020 Annual Report. The report received planning commission approval on February 18, 2021.
Again, this is one of Liz's items. I believe she's furnished the board with a copy of the 2020 Annual Report. This report is sent on to D C E D each year to describe the activities in the township in terms of the land development activities and permits and so forth that were in the township for the calendar year 2020. I believe the report is on file here at the township if anybody wants to see it. And the board's been furnished with a copy. And you just need a formal motion to consider moving the report on. It's been received and, and that it be moved on to the next level given to D C E D.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. Have a discussion. Do you have the, a copy of the report?
It was in our, it's this, right?
I don't.
I guess the question should be probably addressed to Liz, but showed estimated construction cost 2019, 2,224,952, and went up in 2020 to 6,135. That was for single-family. I see it's just some.
That sounds, that sounds correct. I mean.
Some dramatic jumps.
When you consider McConnell Trails, Traditions of America, the finish of the overlooked plan, Windsor Woods, and all the developments occurring in the township, that wouldn't surprise me at all if that's the number. She just summates up building permit applications to get that number.
I think, I think it was 200 new homes built in Cecil.
Single-family detached went from 33,000 to 52. No, I'm sorry. That's 33 million to 52 million. All right, I'll ask the questions. I'll direct them to her. I wouldn't mind that she would come present to the board sometime like Bill Ball, Bill user, what's his name? Excuse me.
Bruce.
Bruce Bosley, did you know?
Yeah, that's, I can ask her to attend if.
Yeah, maybe just to give a summary to the public, constituents as well.
No problem. I'll ask her to attend in April. But in the meantime, there's been a motion and second for the planning and zoning report. Is it, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I like the thumbs up, Eric. Makes it easier. 532021. Consider the fifth release of financial security posted for the installation of public and private improvements for Traditions of America Phase I from $1,433,179.56 to $838,131.09, a total reduction of $595,48.70, I'm sorry, $47 cents, as recommended by the Township Engineer.
Phase I of Traditions of America is paved with at least the first level of paving. It has to have some, all the utilities are installed in the buildings over there. We're still retaining about $600,000. We'll get a 15% bond on this when it finally closes out, but there's plenty of money to finish up what they need to do over there, and we're in agreement with the release request.
Does this include moving Han Road?
No, Han Road is bonded separately. It does not include it. We did a separate agreement on Han Road, and there was a separate amount of funding.
Okay.
Yeah, can we just get a breakdown on the, or separate the private and public improvement? I mean, the two numbers, we're still equal 1.4 million.
Correct.
But it's just, it's just a question of two different numbers.
We bond, we bond these ones as always. Everything is considered public improvements because we consider the green, erosion, sanitation control, all the paving in the streets, the storm source. Everything is considered.
We used to consider public improvements the required ones, like the state requires for ENS and stormwater and things like that.
Right. But, but what I'm saying is this is totally public. There's no private improvements. We don't, we don't differentiate between the two.
Or is that just a?
The only place we do private improvements is on site plans.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I was confused why that was on there then on the.
I'm sorry. Then that, that's.
So it's just worded incorrectly.
I'll correct that wording on future ones. That's a good point, Tom.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
5-0. 542021. Consider the first release of financial security posted for the installation of public and private improvements for Traditions of America Phase II from $1,853,892.70 to $781,999.40, a total reduction of $1,071,893.30.
$71,000, $71,000.
$71,000, $1,071,893.30, as recommended by the Township Engineer.
Again, this is for Phase II of the development. They've, they, we still have a fair amount of work to go there with a million dollars left on the table, but we've verified that this is the amount of work that has been completed and would make this recommendation on the reduction.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. 552021. Consider application for payment number one for the work completed to date for the Cecil Township Bridge Replacement Project in the amount of $132,857.50 by co-curring contracting. There's a significant amount of damage over in the park because of them like driving around. Are they responsible for the repair of the park or are we responsible for the repair of the park?
They were responsible by contract for restoration.
Okay.
But the Public Works Director, Mr. Bodaroff, has made a deal with them. They took away another bridge or they did some other work for him, Dawn.
They reset that other bridge that they took out and everything.
Bill agreed that the Township forces would take care of the restoration.
They just frustrated because he's going to dig it out anyhow.
I'm just asking publicly because I've been asked by a number of residents, so then it's on public record that we are aware that there needs to be restoration done in Cecil Park and that there is a plan for that to happen.
We're, we're still holding $7,000 on this contract for co-curring. So if rest, Bill says that's not true, there's, you know, they'll, they'll take care of the restoration before they pay. But it's my understanding that's was the deal.
Can we make sure, can we clarify that, like, and maybe get in writing, like, what the deal was and that?
I think Gretchen should be involved, actually.
No, no, that, that's.
Dan.
Pardon me?
There, there was a trade-off, I believe. I talked to Bill. We were actually to lift the bridges off. They brought a machine in to do that, so in return, we would fix up the grounds, restoration, topsoil work.
I don't think Gretchen needs to be involved, Dan. I just, we just need to make sure that whoever's responsible for restoration knows they're responsible for restoration and is doing the work.
I agree.
Okay. All right.
I'll make a motion to prove that.
I'll second it. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. 562021. Consider application for payment number one for the work completed to date for the Anger Road Culvert Project in the amount of $148,102.25 by Jet Jack Inc.
Yeah, this is a payment. The work is complete except for the restoration on this project. We did get, we, we ran into a situation on this job where Anger Roads started to show some movement a little bit further down. The contractor was available to expand the work at unit prices. And we're going to end up spending about, about $20,000 extra to expand the project significantly. We were originally going to put in a wall over. About 144 feet. We're going to get over, almost 240 feet of road protected now at a much less cost. Our, our initial cost for the wall was going to be like $1,800 a foot. We're now spending about $1,000 a foot to do it in this fashion. So we polled the board to make sure everybody was okay, at least, and I spoke to Cindy to get the okay to proceed with this. There'll be a change order to account for it, but for the time being, this is just a partial payment, but the project is complete.
Dan, you going to keep up on their ENS over there?
Yeah, I mean, they have, they.
Done by the brick?
Yeah, they have to keep everything in until it's cleaned up. Yeah, we're, we're.
But there's nothing in unless they put it in.
Yeah, they, they have to put blanket on the slope. And as soon as, I mean, we just got snowmelt yesterday.
Yeah. Okay.
They plan to be in there this week, from what I understand, but I spoke to your office.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Abstain.
For, and one abstention. 572021. Consider the request of Alma to vacate a portion of South Point Boulevard associated with the purchase of the area to attach to their property located at 100 South Point Boulevard.
So this is the, this is the plan for Alma. Alma is the, is the first building you come into South Point on the right-hand side. This is a wide portion of, of the dedicated right-of-way of South Point Boulevard. And I was contacted by the Solicitor's Office that the board had agreed to purchase, let, let Alma purchase this property. So they prepared a consolidation plan where they will take a part of the right-of-way, which is this area here, and add it on to their property. Before they can do that, they have to, they, they made a request to the board to vacate a portion of the road, which has to go by a vacation process before we can actually sell it to them. So that the, the action tonight would be for the board to agree to hold the public hearing, Gretchen, I believe, on the, on the vacation of South Point Boulevard before this plan can proceed any further.
Correct. You'd be voting, we'd advertise, the public hearing could be done in conjunction with next month's meeting.
And, and all they want this for is just to expand their parking lot down here a little bit. This little chunk of area, they want to get some more parking. And it's, it's unusable ground. It's nothing that, that the township would, would ever use relative to South Point Boulevard. Extra right-of-way that was there when, when the, when South Point Boulevard was created.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The public hearing at the next meeting?
I was going to do that next. Yeah. You're one step, that's okay. You're one step ahead of me. So we're going to schedule a public hearing at 6:00 or 6:30?
It's 6:30. It's going to be.
That's what I was saying. Okay, so we're going to set a, if all the board members are in favor, we're going to set a public meeting, 6:30 p.m., April, hold on, let me look at the. 5th, Monday, April 5th. 58, moving on. 582021. Consider authorizing the Township Engineer to advertise for bids for the repairs to the Creedmore Road Bridge. Before we get into that, Dan, you want to do your presentation?
Yeah, we have a, we have a presentation related to bridges tonight. I just wanted to introduce Kevin Nadlin from our office. Kevin's our structural engineer. He's done a number of small bridge projects. He's worked with Bill and Dawn to develop the scope for these projects. There's two bridges we want to talk about tonight. The first is Creedmore. We've been, we've been limping along with repairs to the Creedmore Road Bridge, which now services the Miller's Run Sewage Treatment Plant.
You might want to turn around.
And it's time to consider replacing the full deck to get that bridge back open. And the second part of this, we want to talk about Bridgewood. So I'm going to turn it over to Kevin, and I'll operate the slide show.
All right, well, good evening. Just as you can see, a quick agenda, just kind of what we're going to run through real quick. So Creedmore, we'll go through first. We'll talk about some of the existing issues out at Creedmore. Our proposed repair scope that we talked through with Public Works, and then the anticipated project cost, and then we'll get into Bridgewood. The bridge there. We'll talk about a couple of the existing issues for repair options that we've come up with, just for consideration, and then some of the costs for each of those options. So to go through Creed, go through Creedmore. Creedmore's a, a steel beam deck with, with concrete. The steel beams are in poor condition at this point. The bridge is under inspection by Pendot, so two inspection reports ago. Pendot wanted to put a load rating on the bridge. We actually came in, made some repairs, and then also came up with a scheme that we could restrict the bridge down to a one-lane restriction at this point to keep the load rating off of it so that we can still run full trucks over the bridge at this time.
There's approximately six or seven residential houses that go in this direction. Put the plant on the very end of the road, just for reference, beyond the bridge. There's approximately six or seven residential houses that go in this direction, and then they're putting a plant on the very end of the road, just for reference, beyond the bridge. So there are residents up there that rely upon this bridge. It's the only way in.
Um, and then we do have a little note there, so we will be getting another Pendot inspection here in the near future. Um, we think it's, it's likely that the bridge is gonna end up load restricted again. Um, we were really kind of with the numbers on the fine line of whether or not there was gonna be a load restriction on the bridge. So just a couple photos of kinda what's happening. So you see a lot of corrosion on the beams, um, and that's actually what's controlling the load rating. Um, you also see in that upper-left picture some of the deteriorated abutment that we'll be proposing to fix. So our proposed scope that we have, um, is termed a superstructure replacement, so that's, we're gonna replace the steel beams, um, we'll put a new concrete deck with an asphalt overlay. We'll also put new parapet transition, in transitions. Uh, into guide rail, and then as part of the paving improvements, we'll put some new approach slabs onto the bridge. Uh, we'll mill and overlay some of the existing asphalt, and then we'll install, um, guide rail in the immediate area and then replacing some poor guide rail along Creedmore as you head back towards the solution. Um, oh, sorry, go back one. Um, so as Dan mentioned before, this is a, a one-way-in, one-way-out scenario, so we did kinda highlight and red there. You can see where the temporary access would be. Um, so we'll have a temporary road that'll actually cross the stream, um, via some pipes that will put in the stream, and then it, it runs down the road and, and then reconnects to Creedmore.
This was, this was done before, uh, when this bid, bridge was worked on the last time. I've worked with the property owner there who owns, uh, has, uh, equipment supply yard there. I've been in contact with him. He understands. We'll be working within our right-of-way. We're gonna have to, uh, full run with his fence to make this all happen, but. The idea is that the residents, uh, and the, and the municipal authority, while this bridge is being reconstructed, will have access to the properties. So that, that affects the cost, uh, as we look at it.
So when we get into the costs, so we have an estimated construction budget of two hundred and fifty thousand for the deck replacement, um, and then we have an additional seventy-five thousand. It's part of that temporary crossing. Uh, we have to, to put the pipes in. We have to bring in some aggregate fill. We'll also have to put in a little temporary. Um, and then with those repairs, we have an estimated lifespan on the structure before we're into another major rehab of thirty-five years.
So just, just on this one, uh, we're ready to go on this one to get it to bid, um, and that's why I put, I asked for the action on this tonight to get your authorization to put it to bid. We found that the numbers are coming in. Contractors are very aggressive at this time of year, especially after COVID. There's not a lot of backlog, so the faster that we get this on the street, uh, the better numbers we're gonna get, and I'm hoping that we, we have to put upon these. But we haven't taken anything recently on bridges in post-COVID times.
No.
To see what the numbers will be. This is, this is pre-COVID numbers.
Correct. But we have seen even on sort of unrelated projects, we are seeing a lot of bids come in.
Yeah, there's.
A lot of interest just in general from contractors.
Yes.
Which helps.
And this is a small bridge. It's not Pendot-type of a project. It's not subject to a lot of the rules and regulations that, I mean, it's gonna be good work, but it doesn't have to go through the same arduous process. It could be quickly done, and those things are, you know, there's contractors out there, smaller bridge contractors that specialize in this type of work that would go after this.
Are you gonna bid this as two separate items or what?
Uh, we'll have unit price items, uh, we'll bid it as a unit price contract, Dawn. So we'll have demo, we'll have this, this, this level of the concrete, and then the access will be a pipe across the creek, and then whatever aggregate road to, to do that. So we'll, we'll bid at unit price, so there's no, no questions.
I, I was thinking that same line of thought, just that, that temporary crossing, I don't know, the oil and gas industry maybe uses the mats or the fourteen-by-fourteen logs to put down over the pipes or something rather than the aggregates, or, uh, would that ever be an option to have, have bid, the mats?
Well, we have residents with vehicles that are using it, so it has to be safe.
You don't believe they're safe?
No, I'm, I'm not saying that. I, I mean, they're, they're not, like, there's a lot of times that we don't want the gas industry to use it, like, you know, it's, it's not a public situation like this, so. I don't think it's, it's anything crazy to build this, this, this optional road. I mean, it was done before, but, I mean, it is costly. There, there's cost involved, but, but I don't think there's any other choice.
And we do plan, uh, in talking with Bill to bid that as an add-on, something.
Yeah, if he wants to do that.
Could be a, a public works project depending on his workload and everything.
That could be great.
Could cut some costs out there.
Cause I, I think our guys could definitely do that.
Yeah, I think so too.
You know, backfield pipe with millings. We got a lot of millings in the world up there.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, that, that's, yeah, it, aggregate's kind of a general.
I, I, I figured about seven thousand dollars. We can do it for.
Yeah.
Well, and we could, we could offer a contract too, if you're Bill, another option even to build, if, if the millings are available, Dawn, tell the contractors, the township will load the millings to the contractor and make them build.
Okay. We have the millings.
Yeah. Any other questions on Creedmore?
Nope.
Do you want to discuss Bridgewood now or take a vote on Creedmore and then?
It's your call, Cindy, whatever you'd like.
Let's, that's what I was gonna say. Let's vote, okay. So we're gonna, there's still another bridge to discuss, but we're gonna consider authorizing the township engineer to advertise for bids for the repairs to Creedmore Bri, Creedmore Road Bridge. Do you have a motion?
So. A second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It passes five zero. Go ahead, Dan. Now we're gonna discuss, which is not on the agenda, so we will open it up for public comment, um, after the presentation.
This engineer's important. I'm gonna ask, can we vote on it anyway? Yeah, yeah, exactly.
We're, yeah, there's not gonna be any vote on it tonight.
Okay, the Bridgewood Bridge.
So the existing Bridgewood Bridge, um, it's a, it's a three-span bridge. It's a total of sixty-five feet. Uh, it's, it's a little unique, um, we would say for sort of a local township road, just in terms of, of the overall span and, and the three-span nature. Um, currently, the bridge is closed to, uh, all traffic, and it's been designated as structurally deficient by Pendot, so if you look on the left-hand side, and that's what I'll refer to later, is span three. Uh, the beams over on the left-hand side are severely deteriorated, uh, just because of salt, um, runoff that, that's getting to them, and that's what's caused the closure. Um, so you can see just in some of the photos, a lot of the things going on, so the, the main highlight here is, is really kinda the, the corrosion that's ongoing with the beams. Um. There's a, a few pavement issues. The, the deck itself is in fair shape, um, but the main issue and the main driver on everything for this bridge are, is the steel. Um, so we've come up with four options. We'll run through the options real quick, and then we'll get to sort of a summation slide that has the, uh, costs and then anticipated lifespans. So option one, um, and you can kinda see on the sketch, so the focus there i- is sort of what we've termed the, the recommended minimum to reopen the bridge. Um, so that's a partial superstructure replacement focusing on that third span, that, that third twenty-five feet of the bridge. Um, so in this option, we would remove the concrete deck, remove the steel just in that span, um, put in new steel beams, put in a new steel, uh, new concrete deck, um, re- replace the parapets just in that section. Um, and then we'd make some other minor repairs to the steel beams that are remaining, just to kinda strengthen some things up to overcome some of the corrosion that's going on. As long, as well as some minor, um, repairs to the concrete deck. Uh, and then we'd also replace the approach slab on the neighborhood side, um, as part of this work, and then the one thing that we do. Have noted on here is that once we would make these repairs, the bridge is still gonna be posted. Um, our calculations showed it's gonna be posted as a nine-ton single or fifteen-ton combined.
Yeah, and I can speak to that. The, the history on this bridge is that when it was built, uh, there were no standards in township relative to what type of bridge, uh, was to be built, and I believe, what I, what I recall was it was built to county standards, so it was always built as a fifteen-ton bridge. It was never built for full truck traffic, which is about thirty-six tons. So i- i- if, if repaired, it would be back to its.
It's sort of original.
Design specification. So I don't want, I don't want, I only say that because, I mean, it sounds like, well, we're gonna spend this money on the bridge, and it's still gonna be, have a rating on it. It always had a rating on it, so, just for everybody's information. Cause the beams just aren't, they're, they're, the beams were never sized for full truck traffic, cause there was always another alternate to use the Calvin Road Bridge.
Which that is a thirty-six?
That's full, yes.
Yeah, that's full unposted. So if you don't see a posting, then any road legal vehicles, safe to travel. So option two, um, we get into a full superstructure replacement, so that's new beams, um, new deck over all three spans, uh, and then also new approaches, um, some asphalt work. Option three, um, is a complete replacement of the structure with a new, um, some sort of precast, whether that's a, a three-barrel sort of box culvert, um, or some sort of con-span type structure. Um, to just replace the entire thing, so that would be new foundations, if it's a con-span, new precast, and then paving over.
One thing that we didn't mention is before we went to the efforts of looking at this, we did do some testing. We went out and cored the concrete abutments to make sure that there was sufficient material there, because Bill had a concern if the abutments would not have enough strength to do this rework. So we did confirm through testing that there is sufficient concrete there on the abutment.
Correct, yeah. It is four thousand PSI concrete, and it was generally thick enough that we can accomplish.
What we need to.
Yeah, back to, that would be option two, but option three, everything.
Correct.
Um, and then option four, we just present for consideration is just removal of the existing bridge. As we talked about, there's a secondary access. Um, wouldn't have access at, at that point. It would be a dead end on Bridgewood and no access off of fifty. Um, so in summation for each of the options, so option one, um, we have an estimated cost of two hundred and twenty-five thousand. We have an estimated lifespan of five to ten years before we'd get into another pretty significant rehab that likely involves a similar scope on. Span one or span one and two, depending on how the corrosion of the beams. Option two, which is the full superstructure replacement, uh, we've got an estimated cost of five hundred and fifty thousand for that work and an estimated lifespan of thirty-five years before a major rehab. Option three, complete replacement of that structure at eight hundred and fifty thousand with an estimated lifespan of forty years before we get into a major rehab, and then option four, which is the complete. We have an estimated cost of a hundred and seventy-five thousand and obviously definite lifespan.
Yeah, the, so, so again, um, again, focus on the first, on the first option. I think what's important to understand is that if you're, if you spend the money on, on the span three, which is the worst, that we, we wouldn't be redoing that work in five to ten years. You'd have to get on to the next two sections that are, that are deteriorating, so.
Well, so how long would the repair on that section last? Thirty-five years?
That, yeah, that section would last about thirty-five years if we do a, a superstructure replacement.
Got it.
Just that portion. That portion would be.
So you're essentially breaking up the cost over a period of years and focusing on the most deteriorated structure right now?
Correct.
Okay.
This project doesn't fit under the, Pennsylvania's doing, what, eight hundred repairs of bridges in Pennsylvania? This is a bridge in Pennsylvania, or have we ever?
It's a township road.
It's a township bridge.
Yeah, but, uh, I mean, but it's in Pennsylvania. I don't know. Was that ever applied?
Well, you, you can, you can apply for bridge bill money related to it. It's a federal program. Uh, I can tell you that it's gonna cost at least, the construction cost is gonna cost at least double what you would pay if you followed your own procedures, cause Pendot procedures for bridges, and I have a lot of respect for their program. They don't differentiate between crossing the Malaga Hill River, the crossing Shuckers Creek, where Millers Run. You go through the same process for every bridge. You spend a lot, a lot of time and effort to satisfy Pendot criteria to get that money. And at the end of the day, I, I work with different clients, and Kevin and I both have, some people think that's worth while doing. I mean, that's something we could talk to, to people about, you know, possibly raise the money to do that bridge. I'm not sure what's available right there now post-COVID. Their bridge where Pendot's, there, there was a name for it, Fast something.
Rapid Bridge Replacement.
Replacement, they did like eight hundred bridges in the state, and they were all, you know, various sizes, and they basically handed those over to contractors to do, sign, build, work on.
Walsh was the manager. Investigate it.
Walsh managed that project.
But they weren't, but Pendot did that on Pendot-owned bridges. Pendot didn't come into townships and take over township-owned bridges, so we can investigate what he's saying, like, Grant had a rent for me, but we can't expect Pendot to come in and replace a bridge that they don't own.
Yeah, they wouldn't do it.
No.
It applies to their money, and then you have to follow all the standards.
Right.
Well.
Yes.
So from a timeline perspective, when, when do we need, I mean, quite honestly, Ron and I both know the residents up there are getting antsy. So when do you, would you expect that we give you an answer at the April meeting? Is that what you would want? Okay.
Number two is probably gonna be the fastest way.
Option two?
Yeah.
It, it's most efficient. That's the most efficient. It, it would have a.
It's gonna be the most efficient, yeah.
Cause you're doing the whole deck at one time rather than.
Right. And you're good for thirty-five years.
Yes.
Okay. So I would expect us to kinda mull it over for the next month and then vote, have it as an agenda item for vote at April meeting.
Dan, number two, would, if you used box culverts, would you pave right on top of them, or would you do like Pendot did up here? They poured a need-in slab on top of it with all kind of rebar.
You have to have the slab on top, the, sorry, you have to have the slab on top, or you have to have enough fill on top before you put the pavement. The boxes need that structural reinforcement where a gap to spread the wheelloads out to get them to work.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so any one of the precasters will either specify a minimum of, say, two feet of, of aggregate fill, or they'll have some sort of six- or eight-inch concrete slab that's got all the reinforcement that ties everything together. Is that what you were asking?
Yeah, well, I was talking to Bill today, and he was concerned about. The height of it, that he'd end up ramping up off of fifty.
Yep.
Did you, to review the bridge?
Yeah.
As a call. Yes, I mean, the elevations are important because you have to keep the same opening for the water.
Right.
And that's a whole other process too. If you're, if you, from a timeline standpoint, if, if you got into a complete removal, it would require a joint permit, which would take probably a year just to get the joint permit. If you're just doing a rehabilitation like we're talking about in option number two, that doesn't require any further permitting.
Okay.
Like, we have an existing G P R.
Yeah, we have, we already have a crossing permit for those, as long as you have the waterway opening.
Okay.
So maybe two would work. Option two would work. You're losing five years off the total, but it's a difference of five hundred and fifty thousand to eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Thank you. Um, moving on. Fifty-nine twenty twenty-one. Consider an agreement with Cherry Brook HOA for the buffer trees provided by the P H Turnpike Commission. Uh, the township just, um, oh my gosh, acted as a flow-through. The Turnpike Commission, uh, replaced thirty-one thousand dollars' worth of trees that they took down outside of Cherry Brook. They couldn't directly give them money to Cherry Brook HOA, so they gave it to us. We entered into an agreement with Cherry Brook HOA and then gave them thirty-one thousand dollars. Good summary.
Good, yep, just a pass through.
Yeah, literally just a pass through. Um, do I have a motion to consider this agreement?
I'll make a motion.
Go second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Sixty twenty twenty-one. Consider adoption of a policy regarding procedures for filling vacancies on the township boards and commission. Uh, this is the, um, the summer, or not summary, the policy that Gretchen wrote and emailed out to all of us. There were no. There were no suggested changes by anyone.
I didn't see it.
It was emailed to you on, hold on, I can't.
I didn't get it, don't give us a new email address, I don't know if that ties into anything, but are you able to read it today?
No, this was like a long time ago.
Are you able to read it?
Um, probably, it's relatively long, but I could, hold on one second, this was a long time ago.
I have a hard copy too.
Yeah, can you?
Mm-hmm.
I can find the date that it was. Uh, Cecil Township Board of Supervisors Appointment Policy, bear with me, this is a full page of a document. One, an application for positions on authorities' boards and commissions appointed by the Cecil Board of Supervisors, quote, board. And information about these positions will be available on the Cecil Township website at the Township Municipal Building, three, five, nine, nine Millers Run Road, Cecil, P A, one, five, three, two, one. The application form requires the attachment of a resume, curriculum vitae, or letter of interest together with the application form. Two, applications will be accepted for open positions only and will not be saved after the seat has been filled. Three, when a vacancy occurs, the position will be posted on the township website for thirty days unless a shorter or longer period of time is determined by the board. Four, application may be submitted in person at the Township Municipal Building by mail or electronically to the Township Manager before the posted deadline. Five, the Township Manager will make an applicant, will make all applicant names and application forms available to board members at least three days in advance of any meeting. Wherein there will be a vote on any open positions. Any board member who intends to nominate an applicant who has not submitted an application form to the township. Will circulate the name along with the applicant's resume, C V, or letter of interest to the Township Manager at least three days in advance of a motion to name the applicant to any position. Seven, should the board motion to name an applicant for any position for which the method set forth in paragraph five or six has not occurred. The passage of the motion shall be temporarily suspended until such review by all board members and opportunity for board deliberation occurs. A board vote at a subsequent public meeting must take place for official action on the matter to occur. Eight, appointments will be made following the motion passed by majority of vote of the board. Nine, successful appointees will be notified within one week of appointment. Ten, full description, responsibilities, and lengths of terms for authorities, boards, and commissions. As well as names of appointees, appointment dates, and term expiration will be posted on the Township website in the appropriate location. Any comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll make a comment, do, if we could comment. Uh, this was just intended, uh, the past, there were some abuses of the system and there was supervisors made fraudulent information towards candidates. Or that they had meth labs or were accused of, uh, different things that were totally false. So, at least we're heading in that direction, uh, but then two, I'd like to, you know, as the, uh, two weeks, two months ago. You made a motion for a stone mark to be added, Michelle, and I'd rather you didn't do that. Uh, if someone we know isn't gonna get elected, we, we don't embarrass the public by announcing names that way, so.
Do you, do you wanna have this discussion? Cause I'll have it publicly with you. You also.
Absolutely.
You also ran through, what, seven, eight people that you didn't, that, some of whom we'd never even heard of? You said that you.
Didn't, there's no run-through. We, we're a board, there are five members on the board.
Absolutely.
I listened to you.
Absolutely, Eric, that's what you did.
Then, when you were.
There's five members on the board.
When you were called out at a public meeting, sat with your phone in your hand and text Dawn, a text message from every applicant that, between you and the applicant. None of which were a letter of resume, or letter of interest or a resume.
And did you have one for Michelle Stonemark? I had previously spoken with the board.
Eric, I listened.
And there were three persons that did approve and said that would be a great candidate.
At least two haven't gotten the one from the first girl.
That's why this all came to be, that's all, that's all I'm saying.
So just for a point of clarification, you just admitted that you agreed, three board members agreed prior to a public meeting.
No, we had individual discussions as to who would be the best candidate.
That's not what you just said.
No, you didn't, who did?
You said you talked to other board members and had agreements.
I could talk to him separately, I could talk to you separately individually.
Didn't, no.
That is not a violation.
You did not, no.
I didn't speak with you, no, I didn't.
You didn't talk to me?
Oftentimes when I say white, you say black, so I did speak with Frank and I got his approval and I spoke with Tom.
This solves all issues, so there you go. All right, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh goodness. You have a right to say something if you want to, since he can.
Well, he just sat there and said that he didn't want to embarrass people.
Yeah, we, we owe.
And then he brought me up last meeting, he had this meeting.
We owe.
I'm a private resident. I'm not interested in being brought into your little squabble of the board.
And I will apologize to you from the board, your name shouldn't have been brought up when you didn't even receive a second.
That can be from yourself.
You didn't receive a second and your name should not have been brought up. I apologize from the board.
Well, I'm really glad you guys picked everybody, you know, violated the sun sign as much as possible, cause that's the way it's been.
All right, thank you. We're gonna table sixty-two, twenty, twenty-one, if everybody's okay with it, wait, pending Dan and Gretchen's discussion with the property owner. Is, do I have a motion to table it?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. There's the fishing derby one.
Oh, whoops.
Sixty-one.
I did skip that, sorry. Um, sixty-one, twenty, twenty-one, consider the request of the Parks and Recreation Board to hold a fishing derby this spring. The reason this is an agenda item is Dan Uig had reached out to Dawn and I and Jack too, wherever you are, uh, there you are. About, he, he has somebody who wants to donate money towards this fishing derby but needs a letter of support from the Board of Supervisors, which is why it's an agenda item this evening. So if I have a motion, what emotion? I'll make a motion, do I have a second?
Make a motion that they clear this with the Fish Commission.
Yeah, we can make that a requirement, I marked that down.
Because I was told, the Fish Commission told me you couldn't have one.
Yeah, we have to clear, we will clarify, Jack, will you make sure that they clarify with the Fish Commission that they, um, that they're allowed? Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Dawn, you'll get that letter to Dan. You have it to sign. Awesome, thank you. Cool, sorry, sorry for skipping sixty-one. Sixty-three, twenty, 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 sixty-three, twenty, twenty-one, consider the Board of Supervisors regular monthly minutes from the Monday, February first, twenty, twenty-one. Cecil Township Board of Supervisors regular monthly meeting.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second, moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Five zero. Sixty-four, twenty, twenty-one, consider the general fund invoices from February first through February twenty-eighth, twenty, twenty-one.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Passes five zero. Moving on to Board of Supervisors discussion of new business, I apologize, Dawn and I had a miscommunication about, um, an agenda item. That Washington County Chamber had reached out to us on for, bear with me one second, for a race that they want to hold, or not they wanna hold, that they're supporting in South Point. Um, bear with me one second. I will forward this to you for your review, but just as a general outline, um, there is an organization called Tunnel, Tunnel to Towers Foundation. Um, it's a twenty-year-old foundation, they hold five K events nationally and they wanna hold an event Saturday, September eleventh, twenty, twenty-one. It's their first event in Pittsburgh. It's related to the anniversary of September eleventh. It is, they're inviting first responders of the area to attend, participate, and be honored. It's a professional timing company contracted for the race. They have a pre-event ceremony which would include an honor guard, national anthem, and a race kickoff. Post-event award ceremony with wrap-up at twelve P M noon. Vendor area, D J, portable restrooms. They already budgeted for the road, road closure and payment of police and E M S, they have insurance. The event is alcohol-free and it involves local business and sponsors, inviting local politicians, sending out press release to news stations for coverage. Um, the reason Washington County Chamber is involved is because as you can imagine with COVID, um, South Point is hurting. The businesses, the restaurants, the hotels, everything. So, an event like this where we don't normally, as a board, um, sanction races in South Point, it just, it ends up utilizing a lot of resources. And costing the township a significant amount of money. Washington County Chamber is asking us to consider a pu- putting a policy in place that would allow, um, races to be held in South Point. And they actually sent Dawn and I a business plan that I will send to the other board members, but it lists things like economic benefits. Um, and it says, unlike hotels in the racetrack road quarters, South Point's overnight stays have traditionally been driven by business travelers throughout the work week. A consistent increase in weekend business resulting from a five K, resulting from five K race events would be meaningful. Additionally, considering COVID-nineteen pandemic, any incremental business we welcomed, welcomed in the townships to help the township hotels recover. They even set up, uh, just suggested guidelines, we could set a limit of one race per year. These are all things the board will need to consider. And we could also predetermine the following, which are minimum, maximum, minimum and maximum number of race participants. Adoption of risk management plan, um, requirements for E M S coverage. Um, payment of, prepayment of the police, including a pre-application process and an application process that would need to be approved. So just so you know, this is something that is going to go to the board members to, twofold. One, consider that the, um, Tunnel to Towers Foundation race specifically on September eleventh, but then also to consider allowing future races in South Point. So there's no vote on it tonight, but in an effort to be transparent. Um, and then, while I have you guys for two seconds, I am actively working with Jack and Dan and Washington County Chamber on grants for Klinger Park. Um, I say that every month, but I just don't want you to think we've forgotten about it, we are actively working on stuff. Um, as soon as something is formal, I'll let you know, but we're still trying to pursue it.
I would ask for approval from the board as well to work on grants for Cecil.
What do you mean? When I have a specific grant that needs approved, I, I bring it to every time.
I'm, I'm asking to assist Cecil Township on grants as well. I mean, you got the approval last month to work on it, right?
Do you wanna do it?
It's just.
Was there something that was done in January?
It's just a general, no, there was no grant for Klinger in January.
L S A, was L S A awarded in January?
It was awarded, but it was applied for in October.
Applied what?
Applied for in October. And board approved to be applied for. Any sort of grant requires a vote, board vote. When something's formal, it will be brought to the board.
So that's what I'm just asking, that, just as you had asked to go for grants, I am asking as well.
Just Jason or T T.
Yeah, yeah, he helps lots, yeah.
So I'm asking the board if I could work on applying for some grants for Cecil?
Like overall, the township, yeah, go ahead, I mean, I, I'm all for it.
Board okay with that? Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Go for it. Um, again, if, once you have a specific grant in mind, you'll need to bring it to the board for a board approval vote. Um, anybody else have new business?
Yeah, yeah.
Hold on. Oh, 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 yeah, thank you, thank you, I'm sorry. Um, we need to take a vote and this will be open for public comment. Um, for those of you that did not see, we, um, we did not, you wanna say it, I don't know how to say it.
Right, so the Commonwealth Court issued a decision in the South Point Golf Course case, uh, there were three, three, oh, sorry.
You don't need to yell.
The Commonwealth.
Okay.
Okay, can everyone hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, um, this was in the news, the Commonwealth Court issued a decision in the South Point Golf Course case. There were basically three issues on appeal, one was procedural about the process in which we enacted the ordinance. One was a spot zoning issue and one was that we overstepped, uh, our, the authority in the zoning ordinance because it allowed too much discretion to neighboring property owners. Um, and they found on the last one that the ordinance is invalid. Uh, so at this point, there is, um, we, we're going to be seeking reargument, at least that's my advice to the board, uh, which we'll be doing this week. That's a kind of a precursor before an appeal because there are some things that we're looking for, some clarity from the Commonwealth Court on, uh, before there's a, a formal petition to appeal if the board wants to take that step. So, at this point, I'm asking the board for a motion on a petition for reargument, which if you approve, we'll, we'll file it this week.
It's been moved and seconded, I'm gonna open it up for public comment, does anybody have any questions or comments on it before we take a formal vote? It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Passes five zero, so you've been formally approved, anything else that I missed, go ahead, Dawn.
I, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, uh, there was an item I had brought to the board's attention, um, regarding the amusement tax. And it kinda piggybacks off, uh, what you were saying earlier about South Point and actually food service industry is, you know, hurting, um, as a result of COVID. Uh, in speaking with Gretchen, there's a process by which the board would have to consider that since that tax is approved by ordinance. Um, there was an ample time for us to advertise, so Gretchen can maybe briefly explain the process. And if the board still wants to perform some sort of temporary suspension, uh, they can do so, so Gretchen, if you want.
Right, it's, it's generally better to temporarily, temporarily suspend collecting a tax as opposed to just canceling it. Um, and the process though to temporarily suspend the tax is still an ordinance change, uh, in which you would basically reduce that, that particular fee from a fixed cost to a zero-dollar amount for a specific time period. So if it's, and, and I understand it wasn't, notices weren't sent out and that tax was not collected that, this year yet. Uh, so you could pass an ordinance basically reducing it for this year, for this year and next year, uh, you know, reducing it to, to zero dollars from the fixed cost, if you're interested.
As, as a point of, uh, interest, that tax, that revenue only generates thirty-five hundred dollars approximately every year for the township, so it's not.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna add.
Big ticket item, but I know that the service industry has been, has been struggling.
Sorry, I was trying to take. Do we just have to take a public?
Yeah, it would, well, it would be.
Yeah, it would be effective for.
So you'd have a hearing, I mean, it's a two-minute hearing, basically, it'd be advertised, um, you'd be, you'd open it up for a hearing for comment.
It's not one of those ones that falls under, it's not, here isn't required.
I think it's still a.
Amendments are required, do you think that one is?
I, I will check, but I think it's a seven-day advertisement and, you know, hearing at the next meeting.
For a suspension.
But if we don't need it, then I can just give you the ordinance amendment and you could pass that at the next meeting. So it would either be an advertisement hearing or the ordinance amendment and you can just pass it then.
I know, you just give us the ordinance amendment and then we'll just pass it, you know.
Correct, I can do that, the only question is, do you have to do the advertisement and hearing and I'll just check on that?
Okay.
Yeah.
And you'll let us know and then we can schedule it if and when we need to.
But is it the board's intention to do a suspension?
Yeah.
So, can we just do that?
No.
No, she just said.
We might have to have a hearing, we probably will.
She said she has to look at it.
Yeah, it would be done, it would be an amendment to the ordinance, so it's a formal change in the ordinance. Um, the only question is whether we need to have the hearing or not, but I will send you the text of the ordinance change, uh, that demonstrates a suspension for a year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, and I'm sorry, one other item.
Go ahead, you're fine.
The, I, I had talked with Supervisor Cassiolin, I have also received calls from residents regarding, um, excessive jake break usage on, on Burnside Road between, uh, the intersection is of, um, Profio. I'm sorry, not Profio. Um, we're through the over, yeah, uh, through the Overbrook section all the way down through, uh, to nine eighty. It used to be the Pendot required you to work with them to get, uh, something passed, even if it was a local road, that's no longer the case. Um, what has to be, what has to happen now is, uh, the engineer has to perform a study. So in order, in, instead of me authorizing Dan to, uh, to perform that study, I probably should get board's approval, uh, to say it's okay for him to perform a study to, to see if jake breaks can be restricted in that, in that area.
I'm fine with it, are you guys okay?
I'm fine, I'll make a motion.
All right, okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Um, quickly while we're doing that, Dan, do you have anything else you wanna add from an engineer's perspective?
Uh, just very quickly, we did take bids on paving last week, uh, two contracts, uh, we had six bids on the first contract, the low bidder, uh, was four, four hundred and forty-one thousand. Less than our estimate of two hundred fifty-four. Second contract B, um, was, came in, uh, there were five bidders, uh, three sixteen was the low bid, uh, that was over our estimate of two hundred fifty-four. Uh, there's drainage in both of those projects, we hope to bring those projects back to you next week, next month, along with a bridge bid for Creedmore.
Sounds good, Gretchen, any summary you wanna provide to the board?
Sure, thank you. Uh, this was a fairly busy month for the township, um, as I just discussed, we had that opinion come down from the Commonwealth Court and we had to review that and advise the board on options. We also have another Commonwealth Court brief that's due next week in a related case, but it's not impacted by this particular ordinance, and that's the South Point Medical Brief, so that's due next week. Uh, I had an argument in the Crown Castle case, I had an argument, uh, in the Bernard Schultz Wellpad, um, dispute. Uh, I had a briefing in the Omatic case and there, I have an argument this Friday in that case, that's a land use appeal. Um, I had, um, a status conference related to the Connor Schultz. I had a status conference related to the Connor Schultz Wellpad, and we now have a briefing schedule, which I circulated to the board for a bifurcated briefing. She's going to address some hearing, some issues about the hearing first and make a decision, and then we'll address the actual appeal. In the eminent domain matter, we had briefing, we have preliminary objection arguments tomorrow, as well as we had a meeting with the developer to discuss some potential ways to proceed. It wasn't very fruitful, so we'll be proceeding with the argument tomorrow. Other than that, I've been assisting the zoning officer, working with the township manager on various policies, advising on various matters, including the jake break matter and the amusement tax matter, and looking into this issue with Rose Avenue.
Any questions for Gretchen? Any other board or supervisors discussion of new business?
This, this isn't new, but for what, a year and a half? We've been going round and round with Ryan Holmes. And Frank, you was up there the other day, Cindy, you were there. Those people are just, the roads are terrible. I mean, you look at every new house, got muddy tracks going right into their garage. Can we issue them a fine or something? I mean, because they're not paying attention.
Who is it, and what is it?
Tunnel to Towers Trails. I actually went up there last Thursday or Friday, I forget. It's awful. Like, I don't think I fully understood. I was like, oh, new construction. But essentially, they're tracking, they're working in a new section. So when you pull in, you pull in and you make a left, and then it's, it was. They're working up to the right, and they're just tracking mud from the entire, like, path. And there's no way, like, I was told they're running a street sweeper every day. I don't think that that's possible.
No, they're not doing that.
Do you have a mud-free road ordinance?
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Okay, so you, you have a mud-free road ordinance?
Yeah, we do.
Oh, this, okay, we haven't accepted anything. This is just the developer.
So what we did was, I worked with the Lexington.
Okay.
The latest developers agreement of Tunnel to Towers calls out all these issues. Is the township the right to do certain things? I think we should vote that first.
Okay.
I can't recall, but I think we said we stopped over there.
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be great, so there might be something in the.
I drove over there, so, out of curiosity, because I, I understand there's some level of mud that you can avoid while you're doing the construction. But when you're starting first thing in the morning, it should be clear because it should have been cleaned the night before. And so I drove over there Sunday morning, Monday morning, and then again, or Saturday morning, Sunday morning, and again this morning, and it's a mess. So there's no way they're cleaning it every day like they're supposed to. So I think we need to set a hard message to them that we're serious about them following our rules.
Well, I thought we held up their building permits. In order for us to release building permits, that was one of the terms. The roads are to be broomed every night. And I'm pretty sure it's on that list, and they're, they're not.
So I would say that.
I'm exhausted for a minute. It's like, it's organized chaos up there.
Yeah, it's horrible. And they have, like, they've cracked all their sidewalks and stuff. I mean, it's not good. So maybe, Dan, if you could work, if we could work with Gretchen and come up with something that lets them know we're not joking around. I honestly, I don't think it's, I don't think it's Ryan Holmes or NBR. I think it's Stranishaw who's causing.
It is mostly Stranishaw.
They're not, he's not following the, the rules.
Dan, I don't know that we really even need to involve Gretchen on that. I mean, if, if, if we have it in the agreement, if we can just stop issuing building permits, we just need to get ahold of Liz. That's what I'm saying, she's the one that, I mean, you got.
Not Liz, he wants Gretchen to write a letter that says that.
I, I think it's time that she writes a letter.
Well, writing letters, one thing, but I'm saying, we, we have a means to just to stop, to her to stop issuing permits.
But in Dan's defense, I mean, he's reached out to them, what, six times in the past month, at least?
They were running that articulating truck and road again.
In the old days, I'll say the old days, they didn't build in the winter.
Right.
They're building out there in condition, only can make mud at this time of year. So, you know, this is production, this is, they gotta deliver homes. No, I don't think they care. I think they just gotta get it done. And they're prepared to do anything they can do, but they keep forgetting they're supposed to clean Rose Avenue. They're not following what they told, they're not living up to their commitments.
Right.
But when my was out last week, I got a picture right away. Joe talked, Joe talked to Ryan. They came in, cleaned it up with skid, skid stairs, and then they broomed right away. They did react immediately because they had a lumber truck that ran awry. It wasn't their guys. They had a lumber truck that went wild, you know, pulled mud onto the road.
Yeah, but they brought them in though.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they should have locked them in. They should, they should have somebody locking them in to make sure it was okay. Like I said, I'm, I'm just, I'm very frustrated too. I know the board is. I just think we need something, I'd like something official. It's in the developers agreement, I got that now. Because the first thing we'll get a call from is their, their chief counsel to say, you can't do this.
Yeah, that's, that's easy, and we can do that.
Well, I think Gretchen should, we should contact Liz. I mean, Gretchen writes to them, they're just gonna ignore it for a while. What's she gonna do, give them ten more days?
No, no, I'm just saying.
She said, he's saying, write a letter that says we're gonna stop building permits.
This is culminated to the point that I think it's a legal issue within the developers agreement. We have a right to do this. I think something official from Gretchen stating that from, from the township lawyer would be good and try to shut these guys up. Because again, I don't, you know, Liz can shut off the building permits, yes, but then the next call will be, you can't do that. You know, show me where you can do that. I just want to make sure we're on sound, where you can do that. I know that we put it within the latest section of the developers agreement.
Maybe like Liz an email telling her that she has the right to do that.
I want to make sure that that's, you know, just, because they'll, they'll turn around. I mean, they don't care, they'll, I don't want us, I don't want us in a bad position where we're telling them to do something and make the documents survive too.
So Dan, Gretchen, I just said, Gretchen can write Liz or write something for Liz that one, Liz can say, and two, gives Liz the backup to say it. So that the communication goes from Gretchen to Liz, and then Liz is shutting down the permits.
Gretchen talks to, writes something, but you're gonna give them time?
Right, so, well, Gretchen's not gonna write to them, Gretchen's gonna help Liz.
I'll go straight for Liz.
Yeah.
Well, they're in violation of our ordinances anyway. You can't discharge snow, mud, grass clippings into the street.
Right.
So it should be followed up with code enforcement. They should be fined.
Since it's not our rules, do you? You know, until we accept them as official tax requests, can we file a notice?
So, yeah, this is a developers agreement issue now.
That's why you have the developers.
It's, oh, well, if it's a temporary, I mean, you're not finished putting a wearing course on it. It's still an access road to that community.
But it's, but the ordinance reads they can't discharge onto township roads.
I'm pretty sure it does.
Yeah, me too. So that's the issue. Okay.
Painting bids are ready to go, why couldn't we, uh, offer you to award them? Well.
We're gonna.
There's, there's, I mean, you got, you have $750,000 in roads, and then possibly $250,000 in this bridge. Are you gonna have enough money, the fund is discussed, to bring it all in, show it to the board? Because you've got options within your paving contract to pull certain things out and kind of adjust the budget.
We're gonna be ready to go for.
Next month, we'll be ready to plan, we'll work with Dawn once we get the bids.
And the bids are good for 60 days, that's why we felt comfortable doing that. Okay.
We're good on the bids, we're locked in on the prices.
For 60 days. Yeah. Okay. Any other new business? Okay, so, old business? Frank, you wanna?
These bridges that were removed in the park. Dawn, do you have any word on what we're gonna do? I mean, I know there was a couple of interested people.
There was some interest. Ned Williams with the Montour Trail had turned Bill on to some individuals at Moon Township. I think they passed, however, along that same path, other communities were also made aware of that. So it looks like Bill's working with a representative from the city of Pittsburgh. He's expressed interest. They, they would also pick them, you know, because we lost that, that time where we had the crane here that could still lift them and set them on a, on a trailer for them to be removed from sight. Well, the contractor is demobilized, we don't have that option now. So the city of Pittsburgh said, you know, if things work out, they have a contractor that would come out, pick the structures and put them on a trailer and transport them. Nothing, nothing finalized has come through. Even up until this afternoon, I talked to Bill, and there wasn't any final word yet. But before they get released, of course, the board will get, you know, word so that they can make a decision.
Okay, I think the sooner the better.
Yeah, I agree with you, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody, oh, Lawrence.
It says, discuss the Sawr Project.
Frank, did you want to bring that up? Lawrence Sewer Project. You don't have to. You asked me that as an agenda.
Yeah. Was it last month?
Yeah. No, two months ago, two months ago.
Two, two months ago, we voted on, on the, related to the Lawrence Sawr Project, where the township appropriated a million dollars. There was discussion about whether that money should be appropriated to the homeowners to pay for tap-in fees. Well, I was approached by a board member from a municipal authority, and he said that was not the intention at all before I got on his board. So I would want to do things the right way, and the way the letter was stated. If it was appropriated for the construction costs of that Lawrence Sawr Project, I, I think that's where the money should go to, not homeowners to pay in for tap-in fees.
I agree with you on that. I said that from the beginning. Nobody helped Cecil out, nobody helped Muse out. And plus, we're gonna get a rate increase over here.
Yeah, right. So just to be clear too, Gretchen had given us opinion that basically what was trying to be done can't be done anyways. We can't give it directly to the homeowners. So we're kind of at an even ground that way anyways. So if we want, I can open it up for public comment, and we could take a formal vote tonight to appropriate it to the project as a whole.
Yeah, by putting the monies, giving it to the homeowners, that raised the rates of the township as a whole, a couple of dollars a month, which is not fair.
Every month for years.
Yeah.
Right. So if you're okay with it, I'm gonna open it up for public comment, and then.
I think, would it be wise that maybe we have it tabled and allow the residents that it might affect come into the meeting publicly and, and give their side of the story?
I think the issue is the municipal authorities' project is being held up because they don't know where this million dollars that we're giving them is supposed to be, go toward. So it's up to, it's up to a majority of the board, but I would say, at this point, if we don't have the option to give it to the payment of the residents, the only other choice is to give it to the project as a whole.
I would make a motion to table it.
So whether we wait a month or not, the answer is still gonna be the same.
Wait a minute, first of all, Frank, back then, it was set up to give it to the residents, for the residents of Lawrence, it wasn't for a township-wide project. Back then, I'm just saying, I'm just correcting what you said.
Well, no.
The board has a right to change now, a new board can change that, but back then, it was set up to give to the, it was for the village of Lawrence, not for the whole municipal authorities' rate base. And the other thing, Cindy, what you said, Gretchen didn't say that. She didn't say you can't give it to them.
She just literally said that to me, so she, you can have that discussion.
Right, so, two months ago, there was a motion that was contingent upon legal review, and the particular components of that were, one, to pay for laterals, and two, to differentiate between owner and non-owner occupied structures. And you wanted to pay for tap-in fees in one and not the other. And I provided you all with my legal opinion on that. That sort of breakdown was problematic. So at this point, I think the board needs, can make a fresh decision on what it wants to do. But I would have, if you want to do that, you'd have a motion in a second and then open it up to the public. Depends on whether you're, you're ready to do that today, but.
What you wrote, it's, didn't change, you're not changing your opinion on what you wrote. We could give it, but we can't give it, or hold back from non-owner structures, that's what you said.
That's what she just said right now.
Correct, correct. There were two components of what you all wanted to pass. One was an owner occupied, non-owner occupied structure differentiation, and the second was to pay for the laterals. Those two were both parts of it, and I gave you my opinion on both of those.
Which was, we can't do it for laterals, but we could do it for the, the property owners.
You could do it for the property owners, but you can't.
Tap-ins, you could do tap-ins, but not lateral.
But you can't differentiate between, like, Frank's the landlord and I own my property. We would have to get it equally regardless, right?
But you, you said that, she said, we can't give it to them. We can't give them through tap-in fee. I mean, we can pay the equivalent of the tap-in fee.
I said, we can't differentiate. We can't do what you wanted to do, what you wanted to differentiate between land.
No, it was a suggestion that came up.
I'd like to make a motion that the million dollars goes towards the project.
I have a motion already on the floor to table it.
There's not, there was.
I did, I said I had made a motion to table it.
There's no second for your motion to table.
Did you ask for a second? You went into continued discussion.
Anybody want to second Eric's motion to table? Happy? Okay, moving on, go ahead.
I want to make a motion that the million dollars goes where it was earmarked for, the project.
I'll second that motion. It's been moved and seconded, all those in.
Have discussion?
Oh, sorry, anybody have public comment related to that? Not everybody?
I wouldn't mind hearing any other people that might have relevance, or I wouldn't mind further investigating. That was 2013?
There's a motion on the floor.
Um, we're having discussion over the motion. So that, is there a possibility that we can investigate from those that did that motion? Was that 2013, Frank? Is that what you recall? Who was on the board, Elizabeth?
Eleven, twelve, yeah, Elizabeth was on, Tom was on.
Yeah, and you said your intention, Tom, or your thought was that it was for the residents, but for a, a tap-in fee and not the lateral? And that was okay according to Gretchen's legal opinion? Is that right?
You understand, but you never heard the word tap-in fee with the million dollars. Never. It was pledged to words of the project where it should go.
Which, that's what it's going for. It's going for the Lawrence Sewer Project, so that people of Lawrence.
So it was a million dollars going towards the tap-in fee for the residents? Or, or the tap-in fees, towards the tap-in fees? Or it was savings of $2, one or $2 a month on the bills? Is that correct?
No.
No.
No, it went, there was, it was never used, the word tap-in fee was never used. There was a million dollars pledged to the Lawrence Sewer Project. That's what it's going for. And Tom.
What you guys are pushing for is to, for rate stabilization for the entire.
No, no, I'm pushing for, we're not paying their tap-in fees.
So, so what are you, what are you gonna give them a million dollars for then?
For the Lawrence Sewer Project.
It's construction.
But if it allows them to do rate stabilization across the entire township, so people that live in Cecil proper don't have to pay for a sewage project in Lawrence.
I'm aligned with them, that's what they said they want to use it for, they want to use it for to.
That's not true.
That's what they said.
Walter told me straight up. Now, we gotta go borrow another million, so we gotta raise everybody's rates in Cecil and Muse. Walter Oshinsky told me straight up.
Right, rate stabilization for their whole customer base. That's what they want to use that million dollars for.
But the reason they're doing. The reason they're doing rate stabilization is because of, they're doing the Lawrence Sewer Project. If they weren't doing the Lawrence Sewer Project, they wouldn't be doing rate stabilization across the township.
We, we should hold off, we should get, we should get the municipal authority here to give us their exact, and to tell the public.
We had a meeting with them.
And to tell the public exactly what, what they're talking about.
We had a meeting.
We asked them to be here in November, and they said they would come to one of our meetings.
Did you promise somebody you was gonna pay their tap-in fee?
It was what was set up in 2012, and that's why we were voting on it that way.
No, it wasn't.
Yeah, we had a meeting with the municipal authority in the fall where we sat in this room, and they did a presentation and told us exactly what they were gonna do with the million dollars, and it didn't include tap-in, it didn't include tap-in fees. So what do you want to call them here again? So they can do the exact same presentation they already did for you?
I'd like to hear, if Tommy just supported that in 2012, that, that was money was for the residents, and, and it's not rate stabilization, then.
Go ahead, Michelle.
You're gonna vote?
Can you come to the microphone just so everybody can?
When the on start.
You have to top, press the, maybe the bottom. Oh, sorry, use the, you have to use the one in the thing.
Little one?
Sorry, Dan.
When, um, when the township first got sewage, I wanna say it was twenty-ten or twenty-eleven, did those residents have to pay their own tap-in fees?
Absolutely.
So when my sister, who lived, lived at the time on Ma Whinney, had to pay eight thousand dollars to tap into her sewage line or put a lien on her house, that was what we're talking, the same concept is what we're talking about now, correct?
Yes.
So, just so I have my understanding correct, just so I understand this. If, for example, a person lives on Ma Whinney back then, they have to pay eight thousand dollars to tap into the sewage or have a lien on their house and now they have to pay a raised rate for the people in Lawrence to get no tap-in fees. Is that correct?
That's the proposal.
Yes, but, but to back up a little bit.
That's the proposal by Eric, yes.
The tap-in fees were eight thousand dollars. Six thousand.
Okay.
Jesse White got some state money.
She did get money back, yes.
Everybody got three thousand dollars back.
She did get money back, yes.
Right.
Right.
But we didn't pay nothing. They paid their own. They went out and got low interest loans, which the municipal authorities should be doing right now.
I'm just trying to.
They had banks come right here and people got their money.
The other thing, Michelle, that you have to keep in mind is there is an added benefit. The value of your house increases also once you have public sewers. So not only are you, um, yes, you, there's an investment of, in your property, there's an investment in that sewage, but there is also an added benefit because now the value of your property increases.
Right, and, and I do feel bad for the people in Lawrence having to pay those tap-in fees, but everybody else went through this already.
Well, there was a suggestion, and I don't know if this board's willing to consider it, that we could use, for people that are truly hard, have hardship, we could use C, CBD, I can never say it, funds to help people who really can truly prove a hardship and we can help those people. There's also significant grants out there. I know when I did the LSA grant for Clinger Park, Cecil Township Municipal Authority got, I think it was.
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand or, actually, I think they got three hundred thousand, didn't they? Because I got two hundred. I think they got three hundred thousand dollars towards stuff. There's, there are grants and other applications that we can utilize to help those residents who truly need the help. But it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be, in my opinion, that we take a million dollars from people across the board to pay for that when there's other options out there.
Okay, that's, thanks.
Question of the motion.
Sure. Go ahead.
Question, no.
Oh, you wanna call for a vote. Sorry, I can't hear you with your mask on. I thought you said you had a question. Um, anybody else? All right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No. Ask for roll call, please.
Sure. Roll call votes. Savavik?
No.
Cassiola?
No.
Fleer?
Yes.
Igizio?
Yes.
Fisher, yes.
That's just three to two.
Um, any other old business that, that you wanna bring up? Hold on one second, please. Hold on one second, please. Um, if there's no other board, um, questions, we'll open it up for citizens, general comments and questions. Go ahead, Darlene.
I just wanna go on record in regard to, across the board, as far as all the sewages going up. The municipal authority have been talking about it for over a year now. I've been on the board. And they wanna make it uniform throughout the six watersheds. So, no matter what, the sewage bills were gonna go up. Some may even come down. The higher ones are up. I mean, the higher ones may come down and the lower ones may go up a lot more. Because they wanna make it uniform across the township. And there are six watersheds. So, we've been talking about that all along. That letter went out, I don't know, they talked about it back in.
What letter?
August, attached to the water, uh, the sewage bill.
Okay.
It's been attached to sewage bill. They, they explained, the municipal authority explained the whole thing. So I'm listening to what you people were saying about, oh, the wa, the sewage bill's going up. Everybody's sewage bill's going up. It was gonna go up.
But, but Darlene, you're missing something here.
No, I'm not.
No, you're missing something. That million dollars is to go to build the plant. I understand what you're saying. They're gonna raise everybody's race. That, that's, any utility can do that.
Yes, and, and on top.
If they was smart, they'd sell the whole thing to the water company.
Say one other thing. That is not holding up the whole job of getting the sewage in Lawrence. There's other circumstances right now that is causing a little bit of a delay. It is not this million dollars. The municipal authorities got a lot of money in their bank. That million dollars is not holding up.
We were told by Frank Zimba that we needed to, we, I was just re, relaying what we were told by one of your board members and Su Razzar Gizio was, too.
I'm just telling you what I've experienced in the short time that I was on the, I'm on the board.
Well, I'm just telling you where that came from. We were approached by one of your members, Frank Zimba, at our last board meeting and were told that our decision on this million dollars was holding up you guys moving forward. Whether that's true or not is for your board to work out.
That's why be careful what you say because a lot of that is just maybe a little bit of contention because they had to pay their tap-in or whatever. But I was the one on the board suggested also that we need to help these people either through LSA money, grants. This million dollars that was earmarked back in two, twenty-twelve, when I videoed those meetings up at the social center in regard to getting sewage in Lawrence. Why has it taken eight, nine years and the price has jumped from like seven million, eight million to, it was up its highs fifteen million dollars? Somebody's sitting on their hands. They should've had this done a long time ago. The DEP should've came in a long time ago because of all this sewage that is running into Charters Creek.
Darlene, that's what happened here in Cecil. It jumped up five million dollars.
We can't disagree, but that's not.
Anytime you wait, it's gonna go up.
Let me stop you right there. You started about Jesse White. Jesse White didn't get that money for the people in Cecil.
Uh, we're not gonna, we're not, we're not gonna, Darlene, stop for a second.
I, I don't know. I, I was.
Wait, Darlene, hold on. Just for a point, though, like, just for clarification, it wasn't this board. This board doesn't move sewage projects forward. So just for a point of clarification, it wasn't our board that held this project up for eight years. That, and I'm not placing blame on the municipal authority, I'm just saying that it was, we, we don't do that. We are not in the business of sewage projects.
And how many times did they switch engineers?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. A lot. So, okay. Anybody else have any comments or questions for the record? This meeting is adjourned. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, not adjourned. Sorry, come back.
Wait.
Don't, don't walk out when she's, don't walk out when she's talking.
I have two points I'd like to bring up tonight and I'll be quick because I know the meeting's running long. Um, the first one is, I wanted to know, there's been a lot of talk about the, the fire departments and what's happening with their, um, the hiring of the fire chief. I think that it's, there's not been a lot of clarification from the board as a whole and there hasn't been a lot of clarification from the fire departments either about what's actually going on and there's a lot of rumors flying around. So I would just like some clarification on the fire chief position. Is it going forward? Is it?
Yes, it's going forward. We continue to meet with the fire departments. We have another meeting scheduled March eleventh at seven P M. Um, it is a meeting between the board of supervisors, our fire consultant and the volunteer fire companies. Um, there is a job description that has now twice been circulated to, um, the board of supervisors for review as well as to the fire chiefs and presidents to send to their membership for review and comments. Um, response was requested by this Friday, March fifth, um, so that those comments and questions can be, and concerns can be incorporated into any sort of changes in those. There was also a conceptual model that has been circulated also through the board of supervisors and to the fire chiefs and presidents to be circulated to their membership so that, um, and again, comments and questions were asked to be received no later than this Friday, March fifth. There is an agenda, I actually just finished working on it with the fire consultant that will be emailed out later today or maybe tomorrow at this point, um, for the March eleventh agenda, so, or for the March eleventh meeting so that everybody kinda knows what's to be discussed. But the process is moving forward and we are hoping that we can work together, continue to work together.
Good, that's, that's what I wanna hear. I wanna hear that you guys are willing to work with them because I feel like there's a lot of contention going on with the fire departments and.
It's not from us. Like, we couldn't.
I mean, I'm not putting the blame on either one of you. I'm just saying that, you know, from a public taxpayer standpoint, I want my money to go towards public safety, the police departments and the fire departments and.
I won't call out the person, but I had a very good conversation yesterday with, um, a fire, somebody who's involved in the fire service. And I asked a question and his response is, I just want what's best for the residents. And I said, we all do.
Good, that's what I've heard, the same sentiment from same people.
I hope that, I have, I have a lot of hope that while we have hit a little bit of bumps in the road and there are people out there stirring up some drama, I'm hoping that we can come back together and really work together to do what's best for everybody.
So do I. Okay, and my last thing, I wrote it down, so I'll, I'll be quick. I would like the record to show and the meeting minutes to reflect that Supervisor Savavik has singled me out and brought my name into the public township affairs for two consecutive meetings. As a private citizen and a township resident, I find it completely unprofessional, entirely uncalled for and borderlining on harassment. In all my years attending these meetings, private residents' names have never been part of discussion. And I've never, no one has ever been used as a pawn in the bickering among the supervisors. Mr. Savavik's actions tonight, as far as I'm concerned, are completely unethical and you should be held accountable for them.
Any other comment, public comment? This meeting is adjourned.
Gotta drain the swamp. Hey, did you watch, uh, Trump yesterday? You watched Trump yesterday?
No.
Oh, man, did it, was that, this is almost two hours long.
I mean, I seen a couple posts on Facebook where he said Biden, you know, didn't know where he was, like disoriented.
He is. Yeah, but you know what? Didn't we get Carmelo? And, and, and what's her name? Pelosi.
Oh, yeah.